Can I just put actors on this chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'll record the agenda of the great... Thank you.
Red light's on.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the six o'clock, running a little late. Workshop for the Scarborough Town Council. We're discussing the animal control ordinance. And I would ask everybody in the audience to please be quiet. This is a discussion between councilors. And you are welcome at the seven o'clock portion during the public comment section to mention anything you would like on the issues that we discussed tonight. And I think I'll, at this point, I'll turn it over to Town Manager Tom Hall.
Okay.
And also, Councilor Donovan will be also helping in the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the council will recall, and those in the public here, the council met for an hour discussing the committee report last meeting. There was really no clear consensus that came from that, and you agreed to meet again, and here we are. Further, last meeting, I put together a short list, those recommendations that, in my opinion, required or contemplated an ordinance amendment of some sort. I've gone further and prepared a separate list that now includes all of the committee recommendations. And I think it's really important, for a couple of reasons, to make sure the council spends a few moments and talks about, and ideally gives some policy direction to me regarding the totality of the committee recommendations, which there are 23. The council understandably kind of immediately gravitated to the most controversial one, and that kind of dominated your hour. So with your permission, I'd like to help walk you through that process. And let me do that. So forgive me, for those in the audience, it may not be terribly easy to see. Not at all, at this point. Not at all. Isn't technology great? Essentially, this isn't essential for the presentation. The committee report itself contained all the recommendations. And what I'm trying to pull up here is a simple PDF file that lists them, and it was just going to serve as a guide for me and for those at home. Not sure why I'm not getting any... There we go. Again, forgive me for it not being a terribly slick presentation, but I think it will serve the purpose for us tonight. So let's start right at the top. And if it is okay for the council, again, these are the recommendations not requiring ordinance amendments. And I'll read them just to introduce them. And then it would be great to have the council discuss them. Obviously, you're not going to make any decisions tonight, but some sort of consensus or nod can be as to whether this makes sense or not would be incredibly helpful. So the first recommendation was to establish an ongoing committee to help implement a number of the recommendations from the committee. And a couple of thoughts in that regard was to make sure that there's broad representation, both geographically and interest-wise. Beach areas as well is kind of, you know, town-wide. A couple of the areas recommended that they could spend more time talking about is preparation of the education materials, the whole monitoring program, and coordination of volunteers, which we expect will be a fair amount of work, at least initially. Establishing consistent signage town-wide, potentially consider dog parks. And then work with the piping plover coordinator and agency partners in kind of all related matters. So those are just some suggestions that the committee throws your way. So I turn it back to you to have some discussion around that notion. And, you know, we lead with this, and you'll note there's suggested action on some of the recommendations to follow, that in fact, those future recommendations get kicked to this committee because they require a little longer-range discussion before implementation. So, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Discussion. Who wants to start first?
Just to tell you that the committee, at times, found the scope of its work overwhelming. And it seemed as if, to do a respectful job to many of the subjects, that an ongoing committee would be very helpful to the plover coordinator, to community services, and that they could perform a really important function. And that's really how this proposal came about, was the recognition that there is a lot of work to do to do this job well. And so it was felt that a committee dedicated to this, and it doesn't have to last forever. We didn't really decide on those aspects, or have a recommendation on those aspects. But to create one seemed to make sense.
Okay, well, let's look at the first item. In the items that are presented, is there any discussion, or does anybody have any reason why that should not move forward?
The whole thing, or the first item?
No, the first item. We're going to go item by item.
I'm in favor of it.
I understand they would be advisory, so council wouldn't take, you know, recommendations back, and you'd...
You know, there's a consensus either to move this forward or change it. I meant that when it comes before the council, if someone changes their mind, there always can be amendments to delete from that. So this is only a discussion as to whether we move this forward or not.
To me, generally speaking, I can see going forward with a committee, perhaps if it's tasked with specific items such as what's up there, I would hate to have a committee that attempts to relitigate what we're hopefully going to get done in the near future. So, you know, I can see it focused on educational materials. Where do we go from here? Maybe even broaden it to be not just dogs, but animal control in general. I don't know. But that's how I can see this going forward.
Okay, let me get... What I'm saying, for an example, what I would consider on this deletion of would be, I'd rather not consider dog parks at this time. I don't think that we... The budget constraints at this time, I don't believe can warrant spending money on a dog park. So if I say that's the, you know, consensus, I mean, why, you know, spend time on discussing it? Bill?
The committee didn't endorse the pursuit of dog parks as a solution. I think the committee's discussion, I'm not sure that we actually took a specific vote, but certainly people spoke in favor of seeing how effective all of our parks, which have off-leash privileges, under voice control, we have the Scarborough Land Trust, we have hundreds and hundreds of acres. So the...
Right.
All of that was brought to mind to indicate that this wouldn't be something that was going to be pushed.
Correct. I just don't want, when people see dog parks up there, I don't want them to get the idea that we're going to spend money on a dog park. So there's, you know, a better way of saying it, that the town already owns open areas where dogs are free to go off-leash.
Yeah.
I meant, that's how I would explain it.
I think in the final analysis, as I understand it, the real need for dog parks, because there's so much off-leash time presumably being afforded, is really as an amenity, that separate and apart from this discussion, there are folks that would very much like this kind of facility with maybe agility training. So if it behooves the council, I can create a fairly simple order that would create the committee, and these sorts of substantive comments can be made at that point.
Right.
Okay?
I'd endorse that.
Any objections? Jessica?
I just would make the suggestion that it is an ad hoc committee to me, with a sunset to it. I mean, I don't think an ongoing committee, standing committee, needs to be formed to address some of those items. And I could live with or without the committee. I mean, I look at the list and say, some of this could very easily done in-house with staff, too. I mean, if we all agree that we want education materials and consistent signage, well, that's more of a staff, you know, you direct the public works to make signs, you have maybe the clerk's office pull together the materials. It doesn't make or break it for me, but my only suggestion is that it be ad hoc.
Fair point.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I'll make sure I prepare it with that in mind.
Sounds fine. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, number two, designate Co-op Beach as a year-round dog beach. This would involve the exploration of the process to de-list that area from the essential habitat designation, which it currently has, and also consult with some of the various existing committees, Shellfish and Coastal Waters and Harbor Committee, that have related responsibilities, and solicit their input. So that's it. And this is one of the matters, because it is longer range that we suggest the long-range, or this ongoing committee could take up, because it will take some time to kind of sort through.
Okay.
When you say a year-round dog beach, not affected by times or anything?
That was the notion. That was the discussion, from essentially the boat ramp, boat launch facilities, to the physical end of the beach, there's a rott jetty.
Off-leash is fine at that beach.
Yes.
All the time.
And that was based on the fact that there's no historical nesting data at that location.
Okay.
I thought it was suitable for a committee, because a lot more research needed to be done to determine whether or not this was a viable idea. People had to be checked with, and we hadn't, we just didn't have the ability to do that. So I thought, I think it's a good idea, but it needs some research.
Okay, so then that would have to go back to a committee, an ad hoc committee. Okay, very good.
General agreement?
Did you have something, Jessica?
I would just, again, I don't have any air burn with it going, you know, being looked at through a committee. It just, for what it's worth, I'd be more interested to hear what the Shellfish Commission and Coastal Waters has to do, because realistically, our Co-op is our working waterfront. This is where the boats are, this is where they're offloading, and trying to work down there. I don't know what kind of an impact that's going to have to that. I mean, it's food, and food handling, do you have dogs running up peeing on clam crates? I mean, I don't, I really prefer to hear what's coming out of Shellfish Commission for what their input would be.
And I think that's what, if we gave it to the committee, we would ask them to do that.
Bill, nothing?
Oh, good.
Okay, sounds like that one will move along.
Okay. The piping plover coordinator position, we've had one through our beach management agreement, but this would really formalize the position by funding it and cooperating with other private beach owners, perhaps, to help share in those responsibilities. It's really a staff, excuse me, a budget consideration that would be part of my proposed budget. But I'm just interested in your reaction about that general notion. Anybody?
I think that we basically have to have one, or we should have one. Somebody's got to be on top of, on a daily event, what's going on at all the beaches. Oh, I'd be in favor of that.
I have a question. I guess I do remember a blip about this before, that we have somebody in-house already tasked for this. And I remember something with the price tag to make it more of a true focus for that person's position. But what was the price tag? And are you talking a different person for that position, or just dedicating more of that staff member's time?
I'm envisioning a new person that would be dedicated to this. It would be a part-time position, in conversation with the service. They've been, they estimated 20 hours a week, and so that's what we're kind of working with from a budget point of view.
Is that year-round?
Yeah, that was my question.
No, it would be five months or so.
Five months.
The kind of timeframe we've talked about, April 1st through mid-September, late September.
Do you marry anything?
No.
Okay, Bill? Okay, that one seems to be a no-brainer. We'll move that one along.
Improve signage on beach access points. This is clearly something staff can take and run with. It might also be something the committee can talk about. There are a number of, you know, there are major beach access points, but there's a lot of other minor ones, and private ones.
Okay.
That's a no-brainer.
Right. Yeah, I know some of these are going to be, but I'm just looking for, you know, if you guys have any comments to add to that. So we move that one along.
Another no-brainer, I suspect, enhance focus on education and enforcement. This kind of should ride over the entire body of recommendations. Again, staff can do a lot to advance this stuff right away, and then the committee could help refine that over time.
Yep.
Probably no-brain.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that one's moving along, yeah.
Formulate education materials in coordination with other agencies regarding the issue of keeping cats indoors. This is not a, any kind of mandatory or ordinance that would promote that or require that. More some outreach to, for instance, homeowners, beachfront homeowners, to remind them of that and look for voluntary compliance.
Anything? Moving along?
Yep.
Okay, that one's...
All right. We're cooking now. Educate, or excuse me, engage golf courses in town regarding their use of weed and pest control management products. This, again, would be an outreach effort, not anything by way of mandate or regulation. We do have an existing pest management advisory committee, which certainly could serve a role in that outreach effort.
Do they already do that at all? I mean, I'm just out of curiosity. I live across the street from a golf course, so I'm wondering if that happens.
I don't believe we've made any specific outreach efforts, no.
That would be a good thing to do, I would think.
Okay, it was, it's just, would be educational, wouldn't be anything that we're forcing upon golf courses. It'd be asking them if they would cooperate.
And I do think it belongs on a pest management, myself.
I thought it would be beneficial to the pest management advisory committee to actually learn from the golf courses, because the golf courses are really at the leading edge. They're working on how to go to a more organic or less herbicide, pesticide environment. So I thought it would be a useful exchange, which is, I think, the level at which we were talking.
Right. Okay. Any opposition to that, or move that one along, too? Okay?
Okay. Next is petition for the inclusion of the areas north and east of Scarborough Beach, to include that in the essential habitat designation. Right now, the designation essentially is the area of Scarborough Beach, and there's areas north, north and east of that, that for whatever reason are not currently included. So this would require some outreach to the state and involvement with the state to have that happen. And for that matter, we suggest that perhaps the committee could work on that.
Who makes that determination?
I believe IFW does, that's my understanding. But admittedly, I need to do a lot more work in terms of process and understand how that works.
So that's nothing more than a telephone call, right, to them?
I would like to think it's that easy. I'm not sure of that.
Probably not.
Yeah.
It needed more research than the committee had the time or ability to do, which is really why I think it ended up as, you know, being passed to either staff or this ongoing committee to look at it closer, to determine whether or not this was an oversight on the part of IFW, or whether it was, there's other reasons why it's not on the essential habitat maps. We didn't know the answer.
Well, are we making any attempt to put an ordinance out to control those areas?
No, I mean, if this was an oversight, we're merely bringing it to their attention and letting them deal with it, because it, the essential habitat mapping is done by IFW, and that's, there's a statutory legislative process that that goes through. It doesn't have anything to do with the towns regulating those areas.
Why don't we leave it alone?
Bill? Jim asked, why wouldn't we just leave it alone?
I mean, that, anybody could call IFW and tell them, what's the story with that, and raise the question. Doesn't have to be the town of Scarborough.
I think the reason the committee took it up is it was just awkwardly absent, and no one could quite understand why. And in the spirit of protection of plovers, you know, those other areas of that same beach are, in all respects, is much like Scarborough Beach is anything. So if anything, it's to seek out answers.
Is it petition for the inclusion of, or is it inquire to? I guess that maybe makes your point a little, question a little better. Why would we ask them to do that, instead of just asking them, why haven't you done it?
I understand, that's certainly the best way to begin the conversation, yeah. So more of an inquiry than an advocacy for inclusion?
We don't know enough to know whether we should be or should not be advocating. We don't know the facts and circumstances around those beach areas. The committee just didn't receive that information.
Well, I, we're moving that one forward. It looks like everybody's in agreement with that.
Okay.
Next?
Next is on fireworks. It's really just to staff, the police department in particular, heightened enforcement on the beach during what we know as the high fireworks times, July 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And then to coordinate with other agencies to discourage the use of fireworks around documented nest locations, which there's good data on, and further emphasize that fireworks are banned on beaches and all of our materials. That's really just an educational piece.
I had one, one question on that. If the state says that you're not allowed to use fireworks on the beach, and the town owns it, yet, how does that affect the homeowners along the beach? Are they compelled not to use fireworks, or we can't control that?
Right now, water, beachfront property owners are allowed to use consumer fireworks for those five days a year on their property. And that may be problematic near known nest locations.
That's what I'm, you know, asking that question. So that's something that the committee's going to have to work on also, that I take it.
Perhaps, but I think the police department, we can do a better job of more strategic, specific enforcement around those predictable days where there's heightened activity of fireworks.
Well, that's kind of a no-brainer, right? That one move along, okay, yeah.
Evaluate trash collection procedures with the hope of reducing the total number of receptacles that we have on Pine Point Beach, and further, that they be moved further away, or far away as practicable, from known nest locations. This speaks to the issue of predation and trash receptacles being an attractant for predators, and the plovers being caught in the middle. These are, you know, it's something within our control through community services.
That one's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, people can lug their trash a little further. They lugged it in, they can lug it, hope.
Frankly, we were, I was astounded, we have over 50 receptacles on Pine Point Beach alone.
How many?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah. So we'll look to minimize the number of that.
Is that because of the Co-op?
Well, we try to have them at every path to the beach, to make sure we catch people, make it as convenient as possible. We may be able to consolidate those some.
That one's good. Move that one along.
Okay. Next, seek input from state and federal agencies regarding suggested best practices for beach raking. In modern history, we rake the beach once a week, every Friday morning, and we have established protocols. We've negotiated with IFW and the federal service around that activity, but we probably could always do better. And this is just to make sure we understand and perhaps change our practices to do the best we can. This is something we'll do within the month, so we're ready as soon as the season starts.
The town has a good beach raking ordinance. It's a 250-foot setback from the exposure covering a nest. So we do a good job of not raking in those areas. And as a practice at Higgins, they don't do much beyond Morning Street, from Outon to Morning. So, and given that all of the plover activity, as far as nesting and where they start out is the other end of the beach, there's no impairment there. But the committee thought that looking to understand better what best practices are would be an appropriate thing for an ongoing committee to look into.
That's another no-brainer.
Okay.
Moving along.
So the next few, and there's only three left, recommendations in this category deal with town-wide issues. And this first one deals with kind of all town facilities, non-beach. And essentially, the committee is recommending or observing that the current rules in that regard are appropriate, that allow off-leash under voice control. They're looking, they're suggesting better signage at all facilities to publicize those current rules and responsibilities to dog owners. And we can certainly do that through staff and community services. A further thought in this regard is perhaps consideration of dog parks at one or more town locations, considering such factors as location cost and amenities.
I know personally, I would like to see more emphasis on voice control. You hear a lot about off-leash, 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 and off-leash means one thing to a lot of people. Voice control is something totally different to many people. So that's, I would just like to see more emphasis on voice control and what that means.
Emphasis in the signage, or...
Yeah, in any education or whatever that goes out.
I think, what you're probably referring to is a better definition of what's expected for voice control.
Perhaps, perhaps. Yeah, but at least making sure that people who are bringing their dogs to the beach, particularly people who don't live in Scarborough, and there are a lot of those, you know, they see off-leash, and I see them, I saw them the other day, you know, just come down to the beach, take the leash off the dog, and the dog's gone, you know, half a mile down the beach. Even in so-called off-season, I mean, we do have a voice control rule in town. It's part of the ordinances, and I think we need to educate people more about what that is, what that means.
I think you're talking a little bit about just the language we use, because when we refer to off-leash, we all think of off-leash under voice control.
Right.
And so it's a bit of shortcut. But people, when we are crafting brochures, informational materials, signage, we need to make sure that that off-leash reference doesn't stand alone, that voice control is constantly referenced.
Yeah. Right, so it'll all be from an educational base.
I think it's a good point she's making.
Yep. All right. Anybody okay with that one? Yeah?
All right, so next, encourage both the Scarborough Conservation Land Trust and Eastern Trail Management District to maintain current practices relating to dog access, and the town should do what it can to help support them in this endeavor. This is something the staff can certainly reach out and do, and it may take shape of helping supply dog bags, you know, to make sure that it's done conveniently and properly at these locations, to make sure that privilege remains.
Nice. Anything? I guess move on.
Okay. And the last one, require distribution of educational materials at the time of annual licensure renewal. And this would require an affirmation of the dog owner, a receipt of those materials. And then there was some notion of a permit system for temporary... Admittedly, these things need, I think, a little more time to materialize and gel. But that concept was important enough for the committee to make a recommendation in that regard. And I think the real essence of this is to require that distribution of materials and affirmation at the time of annual licensure. That's the time when we are able to be physically face-to-face with the dog owner.
Yeah, that sounds...
Okay, so that completes the set of recommendations that, in my estimation, don't require any ordinance amendment. Many of them refer back to this ongoing committee, and so the, in terms of this batch of recommendations, what I envision coming back to you would be the order establishing this committee. And in... And included under the duties and responsibilities would be a number of the recommendations that we've just talked about. And I expect there will be some discussion around all of those issues. So, the next batch is where we started last meeting and got tripped up a bit. This first one is really the meat of it. And I might suggest that we leapfrog over this and move right to the off-season beach regulations. Does that sound appropriate? And that we can come back and end the evening, hopefully, working through the real substance of this. So, this first one is- is that permissible? Okay. So, the first one is off-season beach regulations. And that is defined between the day after Labor Day and March thirty-one each year. And the dogs be allowed on beach dawn to dusk, but must be leashed between eleven AM and two PM daily. And this was really speaking directly to what we heard from some residents, that they'd like to have some time on the beach year-round without dogs off-leash.
Discussion on that? I'm in favor of that. Need a- does anybody need a few minutes on that one?
No, I think it's a- it's a good- a good adjustment to take account of people who would like to be able to use the beach off-season in the middle of the day for a few hours with dogs on-leash rather than off-leash.
Okay.
Is there a consensus? Move on?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next is to include reference of sight in the voice control definition. So, it'd be sight and voice control. Sounds simple enough, but I think it would be a real improvement to that definition.
I'm definitely in favor of that.
Oh, yeah.
Is anybody thinking of additions to that, or?
Well, I don't see it in here, and I don't know that this is really the spot. But, um, something I had talked about before at the last meeting is the inclusion of an, um, a cutoff point for at-large, when a dog is so far away that they become at-large at that point, to try to prohibit, you know, the problem that comes up, which is, yeah, they become, you know, folks especially that aren't familiar with our rules, come to the beach, and then the dog's half a mile down. So, um, I- like I said before, I'm not necessarily married to a specific number. But certainly, there ought to be something that defines, you know, if it's a hundred feet away or a hundred yards, whatever the number is, but your dog shouldn't be more than X, Y away from you.
Well, that kind of goes hand-in-hand with, uh, voice control itself, you know?
It's not- it's not or, it's and. Voice and sight control. It's not or. That helps.
Well, I mean, you can still see it half a mile away.
Can't hear you at the same time.
I think Jessica's point's independent of the sight aspect, because you get a dog enthusiastic. He's at the beach, and he, all of a sudden, he's on the beach and away from his owner. And his owner's trying to do all the other things that you do when you alight from a vehicle. And so, that can create a real problem. That is an obvious example of sight control should be exercised. Jessica, you're really talking about, you know, sometimes dogs are fifty, a hundred feet away. And it isn't- it isn't the context of fetch, because obviously, on the beach, dogs are sometimes fifty yards away from catching a tennis ball. I don't think we're intending to try to regulate or legislate that. The dog owner uses their best judgment to throw the ball in a direction that isn't gonna be disruptive to other people. But Jessica's talking about where the dog is fifty feet away, and he is disruptive of other people.
Oh, absolutely. And not even just the beach. I mean, how many times have you, you know, I've been up to follow a farm or something, walking around, and same thing, you know? The owner's up on the back corner, and the dog's all the way up at the parking lot saying hello to me. So, I mean, so, that's, I mean, like I said, I'm not married to something, and I'm certainly open to other ideas, whether it's- I think I- something very simple. I don't think it needs to be elaborate. Any dog more than, you know, maybe it's- maybe it's a hundred feet. Any dog more than a hundred feet from its owner's considered at-large, right?
Is that- is that- what the voice- okay, I- what Bill's saying is sight is being added to voice control. There still could be further definitions for voice control that haven't been-
She's talking about at-large.
At-large, an at-large.
An amendment to the- so, it's a companion issue. But I think it wouldn't be inappropriate, because a lot of times, a police officer would not take any action against a person on the beach playing fetch. That's the good judgment that you pay police officers to use. But if it's the right situation, he likes to have an ordinance that has got some parameters to it. So, a hundred feet might be the right number. I don't know what the right number is. But I wouldn't be opposed to seeing us advance this idea into a first reading, so that we could see what it would look like and talk about it some more.
Maybe even if it helps to, maybe we could get some input from the police department, if they have maybe an idea of, you know, how far away. There's gotta be a magic number, too. And I mean, we had hunting dogs enough growing up. Yeah, they can run out ahead of you, but on the wrong wind, they might not hear you calling back. So, maybe that's the number it's tied to. I don't know. But maybe, like I said, maybe PD could give us a little better understanding.
One of the things the chief brought up when he was speaking to a couple of people here, that enabling a police officer that's in a car going by the beach, if the dog's too far away, he can't make a judgment of, is it within the parameters of what we're looking at? So, I think you're right, that we've gotta have a magic number. And I think if we talk around and see what people's feelings are.
The at-large concept is part of Chapter six oh four, Animal Control. So, I think what I hear you saying is providing a little more meat around what defines a dog at large. Rather than- I'm certainly pleased to look at that and incorporate that as part of a host of recommendations.
Yeah, um, basically, we're just- it just speaks to adding sight, voice control. I think we all can agree with that. So, let's move that one along. And when it comes to definitions, like Jessica was mentioning, we can discuss that.
Right. Okay. Right now, in the Chapter six oh four, there's a two- excuse me, a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from protective fencing, this stake incline. And the committee recommends moving that to two-hundred, to be a little more protective. Okay? Next recommendation is establish standards for what we're calling responsible dog ownership that must be read and acknowledged at the time of licensure. We touched on this briefly before. And- but this goes a bit further and actually recommends specific language on this, what defines responsible dog ownership. And it would be these four standards that someone would have to read and acknowledge to before they're issued their annual license.
Is it acknowledgement and writing?
That's the intention. Yep, an affirmation that they've received, read, and agreed to abide by. Would you like me to read those, just so everyone?
Yes, please.
And the committee suggests defining responsible dog ownership as, "Dog should never charge, chase, or display aggression toward any person, other dog, wildlife, bird." "A dog should never behave in any way that a reasonable person would find disturbing or harassing." "A dog should never fail to return to its owner or guardian's side immediately upon verbal or visual command." And a dog should never, um, essentially have more than two dogs under voice or sight control at the same time.
So, if you want, I'll jump out of the gates on that one. I said this at the last meeting, too. I don't approve of the last one for a couple of reasons. But it's certainly- it's not beach-specific. If the intent is for the beach, then maybe I can warm up to it a little bit. But it becomes a town-wide ordinance at this point. So, that would be inclusionary of everything. You certainly have instances where you would have more than two dogs, whether that's through the purpose of hunting, which state laws cover that you're not allowed to, you know, interfere with animals used with a licensed hunter for the purpose of hunting. So, maybe they're retrieving dogs, maybe they're pointers, maybe they're fox hounds, whatever. But through the purpose of that alone, maybe they're duck dogs, you know, whatever. Certainly, service dogs are the same way. Dogs that are in service for service purposes, you know, you can't regulate, rate them. You know, like I said, I could warm up to it a little more if you're worried about having packs of dogs running on the beach. Maybe that was kind of the intent of it. But I don't support the last one.
Okay.
What if you put something that specifically excludes dogs used for hunting? Or while being used for hunting, or some wording along that line?
Yeah, I think I did send something once upon a time to the committee that had something about it, with the exclusion of dogs for the purpose of hunting and, um, you know, but again, I guess, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to rock a boat too much. I'm just saying, as it stands, you know, it needs something somewhere in there for me.
I think everyone would agree with you. And I think it ought to be written up and advanced with the imposition of qualifications that you just pointed out.
Those exclusions being hunting dogs and service dogs? Those are the two groups I heard.
I question doing this at all. And the reason why is because this would only pertain to Scarborough-owned dogs that are registered in the town of Scarborough. And we have hundreds of dogs coming from other towns in the summertime, states, and everything like that, that don't have to go through this process. So, what are we really accomplishing? I mean, if we wanted somebody to say, "Hey, I won't do this, won't do that," okay. So, you give them a, you know, when they get their license, they sign a sheet of paper. What does it really mean? What are we gonna do with this?
Well, to me, it's like anything. It's at least one step or a way to educate a certain portion of the population that's using the beach, that we can control at this point. I mean, and to me, it's- I assume you come in, you get your tag, you're gonna have something that you read, and then you just sign off on it. I mean, that's my assumption. I could be wrong.
Well, that's where I think it really belongs. I mean, if we're gonna entertain some sort of a tag system, it would seem to me that this is where.
Well, I'm talking about your regular tags that you have to get once a year.
License.
Dog tags, licenses, whatever they call them.
Admittedly, this doesn't address all situations, but I don't forget how many dog licenses we issued, twenty-three hundred or something like that. At least we know we're getting that aspect. And that's gonna be, I would suggest, the majority of folks that are using town facilities. There is a further recommendation that speaks to the dog tag program that is more global and might address out-of-town folks, and even seasonal for that matter.
I mean, if we had a tag program, everybody in the town of Scarborough wanted to walk their dog off-leash, would have to go through some sort of a certification, whatever tag program might be. Plus, everybody that comes in out of town. So, you're covering all of that.
Yeah, that's- that's a further recommendation.
I think it's a good proposal, 'cause it's, with the exceptions that Jessica pointed out, it does place a limit on how many- so, you don't have three dogs off-leash. And that is going to be part of, to get off-leash rights in Scarborough, you're going to be told what the rules are. So, it's both in-town and out-of-town, we'd know about it. And, uh, I think it's prudent to have it, given the popularity of our beaches, certainly.
I- I'll say I agree partly with Jessica, um, with the- but for me personally, I meant I, you know, I've worked with trainers. I've trained my dogs. My dogs are hunting dogs. And I find it very difficult after, you know, going over two. If I go- I have four. So, if I go from two to three, it becomes- I have difficult- maybe I'm not that good. But I have a difficult time, um, you know, getting responses out of them when, at that point. But I'm just saying, there's maybe plenty of people out there that can control more than two dogs off-leash. I can't do it. That's the honest truth.
Given the difficulty with voice control, generally for one dog, you get up to three, that's tough, which is why I think it's a reasonable restriction, given the limitations that people have in exercising effective voice control.
So, it doesn't sound like we have consensus on this one. Um, so, um, I don't, um, putting-
I've got- I've got no hang-up in it going forward. I just think it's a duplication of effort, myself.
I would say let it go forward and put something in about hunting, hunting dogs.
I can do that.
And service.
See how it looks in the context of the ordinance.
People that satisfied?
Yeah, that's fine. Because I think I even submitted something at one point. It just said, in accordance with, you know, state laws.
We just don't wanna get hung up on that. Let's move along to the next one.
The next one is to, uh, the last one, under Animal Control Ordinance, is to expand the definition of animal trespass to allow the owner of the property to issue the warning. Right now, it's limited to law enforcement official. And that's really to comply with state law. It's just a cleanup piece. I don't expect you to have any issue.
It has for a while now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Moving on to the plover ordinance. Again, it's to align this with the Animal Control. It's to establish the two-hundred-foot setback rather than one-fifty. And also, address the issues of parasailing and kite surfing, and the other uses that currently require a six-hundred-foot setback. It's just adding those two uses to that current definition or restriction.
Well, Bill, just to ask you, what was this setback for parasailing, kite surfing before?
This doesn't change the setback. The setback is consistent with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services guidelines. So, that's fine. This is adding language to more accurately describe some of the recreational surfing, parasailing, kite surfing types of activities that take place on the water and on the beach. So, we're really just getting our language up to date, so that it's appropriate for the- what people call the activities that go on. It's really nothing more than that. So, it's really just more technical than a substantive change.
Okay. Now, does anyone- that's all. So, okay, we'll move that one along. Yep?
Uh, next is the horse beach permit ordinance. And it's to align the dates of that ordinance with the dates that we're talking about for other plover protection. So, that would allow horses on the beach from October one to April one.
What is it now, May one?
I believe so.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, that one moves along to-
And the final one is, and I think this could take shape by way of an ordinance amendment, is to introduce this dog tag concept. We- the committee looked at a program in Boulder, Colorado, that was very well-developed, that seemed to be of interest, that should be explored further. And essentially, it would require the issuance of a dog tag associated with educational materials. And again, an affirmation by the dog owner that they've received and understand and agree to abide by them. It also creates a situation that it's a privilege rather than a right. And revocation for noncompliance is a concept that would be introduced with that. And then, there was conversation around making it as easy as possible for non-residents, seasonal folks, tourists, to abide by this program as well. This is likely to take a little more time in fleshing out, frankly.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, yeah.
So, maybe the approach, this could be something that's deferred to this ongoing committee for further reflection.
That would be my recommendation.
In the meantime, we could advance the one requiring it for annual licensure. At least, we're addressing those Scarborough residents, which should be the majority of folks, not all for sure.
Any opposition?
I want to go back to the horse beach permit ordinance. I know, I've been here thirteen years and I can tell you a number of Sundays that those horses have been at Pine Point Beach. And on the beach. So I think we must, we have to make sure to include that in the signage.
Yeah, it will, it will be, yep.
And they also have a, their own permit process too, I'm sure we can hand them.
They, they have to go down and get permits anyhow.
The rider has to wear that.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm also seeing it's practical observation.
Yep.
They have been there during the summer.
Right.
Which is not supposed to, I didn't even know they weren't supposed to be.
Historically, not after, uh, May first, so, um, you're right, they shouldn't be there.
Okay, back to, uh, the dog tag program. Is there any, anybody has any comments on the da- dog tag program, any?
I, I definitely think this is something that should be given to that committee to develop further.
Yeah, has great potential. After Chief Moulton addressed the ad hoc committee, it was very clear that he has, uh, great limitations on his ability to enforce and yet we frequently hear that enforcement is a critical element of being more responsible and responsive to the, to the public's needs concerning dog control. So this is intended to be an educational and self-executing, uh, enforcement program so that people will take it seriously.
Well, we've run the table, uh, on the recommendations, but for the, the, the big one, I suppose. Uh, and it's captured in this thought, this is the recommendation from the committee. I know there's been a lot of work done by members of council and I'm aware that there's a compromise proposal that would like to be presented. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you wish to run over some time to make sure we at least get that proposal presented?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I want, I wanna finish this up tonight, so.
So I'm gonna, uh, defer to Counselor Donovan in presenting that proposal. There are copies here, some were distributed and I see some extra copies, if you didn't get one, uh, so you can follow along. And I'm not gonna have it projected, I'm gonna have some, uh, maps projected instead.
Yeah, let me, uh, uh, partly I wanna talk to us, but also I want the public to be more aware. Uh, at our last session, uh, I think all of us came away with a sense that we couldn't, we could not achieve a consensus based on the majority recommendation of the ad hoc committee. Uh, and when that happened, uh, I think all of us said, what can we do that will, will be appropriate and responsive to the situation that developed this past year that put us where we are? Uh, the ad hoc committee had had presented to it, uh, by Lucy Lacasse and, uh, Glennis Shabat, a, uh, divide the beach kind of protection area that would be very protective and restricted for plovers and an area that would be, uh, uh, unprotected in that, uh, dogs would be allowed to be off leash. Uh, uh, we started looking, uh, looking at it, uh, very hard right after the last meeting to see if we could, one, uh, really justify it on the science uh, and two, expand where it had gotten to in the ad hoc committee to be able to find ways to add additional off-leash time throughout the year. Uh, and that was, that was the goal. So, uh, uh, we, uh, reached a point now where we have a proposal that we have, uh, distributed. Uh, and I'd like to be able to go over each of the beaches so that people can actually understand what we're talking about. The protected, uh, we have Western and Ferry Beach, uh, up on the screen. Uh, and Western Beach is under a beach management agreement between Prostnet Country Club and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to have that beach closed to dogs, banned dogs. It's a sanctuary area, it's a protected area from April one to October one. So that's a condition that is already existing. Uh, it was thus thought that, uh, since the rationale for being able to divide the beach was that during plus, plover nesting times, they really don't go very far from, from the nest. Uh, so there isn't as anywhere near the degree of risk as when the chicks come and they just sort of wander around the beach, uh, as they may. So it was expected that we could keep Ferry Beach open to, uh, off-leash, uh, uh, times consistent with what has historically been, uh, the schedule. And so we haven't really tampered with that much, that's, uh, fairly, uh, well in place. When the chicks come, uh, and I don't know if we can, uh, bring it down to show the rest of Ferry Beach.
I think I could.
Little bit more. Uh, you get, uh, let me see if this, this thing will work. Uh, what we're talking about is Ferry Beach being allowed to have off-leash time throughout this entire area, uh, uh, when the chicks, uh, when the, when the, uh, plovers are nesting, which is the April and May timeframe. Uh, when the chicks come, which is the latter part of May, uh, uh, the concern is that they'll start here and they'll come down into here. Uh, so what we're proposing is, once the chicks are on the beach, that the, uh, off-leash privileges still exist, but start at the boat ramp. Uh, and because the boat ramp has boats and cars and, uh, uh, activity, there is the expectation that there will be a bit of a separation there, that it's not an appealing area. These, uh, uh, birds are driven by food and safety. Uh, and so they generally gravitate away from, uh, uh, crowded areas. So that during the, uh, period when chicks are on the beach, which is about a forty day period in the June, July timeframe, uh, before they migrate, then this portion of the beach would still be open to off-leash privileges. So that's, that's how we, uh, propose to treat Ferry. Let's go to the next, uh, the next beach. Uh, Higgins, as you can see, uh.
Bill, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just for the audience, just because I think I know what I'm looking at. Those little white dots are where nests have been historically?
Those are all the nests that have, uh, uh, been recorded in the last fourteen years.
Okay.
Uh, so as you can see, Higgins Beach really only has one place where there's nesting. There has never been, uh, to our, my knowledge, uh, a nest in this area. And that's all seawall along there, uh, virtually the entire, uh, way. And they do not do well with seawalls, uh, because it washes away the nests, uh, whenever you have a high tide. So the idea is to have a protection line at Champion Street, right here. Uh, uh, that would exist, uh, for the nesting season. And then, uh, if, uh, chicks are hatched off Higgins Beach, uh, then, uh, they would still be allowed to have this pe- this space, about half of Higgins Beach off-leash until the plover chicks or their mom, pop, plover pass this line. Once they pass it, then what we have is, we have wandering chicks and that's really what was the circumstance that led to the chick being killed on, uh, Pine Point Beach last year. Uh, why don't we go to the next slide? It had been suggested that, uh, uh, maybe Kent Street, which is the other end of Shipwreck, be used as the dividing line between the protected area for the plovers and the unprotected area where dogs could be off-leash. What, uh, you can see is this circle, when the, the, uh, plovers are nesting, this is the area they go to, to feed. So that by using Kent Street, what you would have is dogs off-leash right in the area where they're feeding. So, uh, uh, Champion is really the minimum because it actually comes pretty close. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna have, uh, a good monitoring program, I think, to assure, uh, safety for, for the chicks. Uh, let's keep going to the next one. The toughest one to deal with was, uh, Pine Point Beach. Because Pine Point has a huge neighborhood, Philsbury Shores here, many, many points of access to the beach. And so what we, uh, did was, we accepted the limitations of the geography. This is the end of the beach that would be the protected area. But it would be an on-leash protected area as opposed to a no-dog protected area. And that's just out of respect for the literally hundreds of homes that are at that end, uh, uh, of the beach. So, uh, uh, again, the, uh, line would be drawn at Herd Park. Uh, and if, when chicks are born in the protected area, they start to wander beyond Herd Park, then that, uh, uh, then, uh, uh, we would have, we, the line moves, uh, once the, uh, chicks arrive down to Snowberry Park. Uh, and so dogs would still be allowed to be off-leash from this point to the Old Orchard Beach line throughout the entire plover season. Uh, uh, that really is, the intention is to create a buffer space between here, which is the protected area, uh, and, uh, and here. So that if they start to wander down, they've got a long way to go before they start to get actually, uh, into a difficult space. For those who are interested in knowing what happened last July, based on my discussions with Maine Audubon, that was the nest from which the chick that was killed came from. And they tracked that chick, uh, for two weeks, they knew that chick was right there. And then all of a sudden, the chick was gone. And several days passed, they didn't know where that chick was. Uh, and then all of a sudden, the chick was down here, three quarters of a mile away. Uh, uh, and that, and, and after a few days, that's when the incident occurred. Uh, what that tells you is, a good monitoring program, which is what we're really proposing here, can avoid that kind of circumstance. If the chicks, we know on a daily basis where they are, and we certify that to the plover monitor, the plover, plover coordinator, has that certified to, to, uh, him or her by a monitor, then if they can't find the chicks temporarily, the beach can be closed till we find the chicks. Now, they could have left and Maine Audubon will tell us that after, you know, a few days or a week. But at least we'll avoid the situation that was, uh, last year where we didn't know where the chick was, uh, and after a couple of days, an unfortunate incident occurred. And I think we can, we can avoid that, reduce the town's liability and minimize the, uh, restriction on dogs off-leash. So I think that, uh, uh, that pretty much covers, uh.
Length of leash?
Uh, the length, the length of leash, uh, uh, it was pressed upon us, before my time, but, but I have been told, pressed upon us, for an eight-foot leash. It, eight feet is not in the guidelines, but it's considered by IFW and U.S. Fish and Wildlife as a good practice. Uh, uh, they don't sell eight-foot leashes, that's what came out of the discussion. Uh, both Margot Hodgkins and, uh, Lucy Lacasse, very, very good, uh, 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 dogs, people, have great reputations on their respective beaches, Pine Point, uh, by the enforcement people. Uh, and, uh, they say, eight-foot leashes don't exist. So, uh, providing a little greater degree of flexibility, I went down to Pet Quarters, they sell twelve-foot, uh, leads. I didn't know what the difference between a lead and a leash was, now I do. Uh, but it isn't much. Uh, so, uh, we considered, uh, providing a little flexibility there would be appropriate and provide a, a length that actually is on the market.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Um, we'll, we'll move on to Counselor, um, comments on this proposal and we'll go from there. Who wants to be first?
I'll go.
Ed?
I think it's a good proposal. Um, it's going to require, the first year anyway, it's gonna require a lot of adjustment by a lot of people, um, by the town, by the monitors. It's not gonna be an easy process. But I think once you go through a season with like, uh, with this and you gain the expertise of what happens during that season, it would be absolutely wonderful if we could meet this time next year and say that the nests increased on Scarborough beaches by twenty percent or thirty percent. That would be wonderful. And yet still provide un-leash time for our dogs. I think it's worth a shot. I know Jessica, you like a cut and dry. This isn't cut and dry.
This is not cut and dry.
But I think it's a good proposal and I think we should, uh, seriously consider this.
Jim? I agree with Ed. Um, I think a lot of time has gone into this and I, myself, see a lot of changes from day one to now. Um, I think it's pretty cut and dried as far as what the rules are. One of the things I didn't like prior to this was the way that the folder was written, cause I know from handing them out, people would look at them and they were either six or eight pages by flipping the pamphlet. Um, but I think that's gotta be cut down so long as it can still be explicit. Um, but I think this should satisfy, uh, the people with dogs with off-leash time. Uh, and they don't have to vary their schedule a whole lot. And I think it's a, uh, reasonable and fair compromise, um, than what we unfortunately did the first time. And, uh, that's that, I, I think it represents everybody in a fair and reasonable fashion for as much as we can because you're not gonna satisfy a hundred percent of the people on any particular side of this issue. And I think this will come as close as we're going to. So I'd be in favor of this, the way it stands.
Jessica?
Do you really wanna hear from me, Richard? Um, I think it definitely comes miles, uh, from where we were. Um, do I love it? Of course not, but that, that's the art of compromise, you find what you can live with. So what happens here is certainly, uh, much closer to, I think, resolving some issues for everybody. It maintains some space on each beach as a worst-case scenario. If the nice little birds decide to wander down the beach, it's a one-month worst-case scenario time where we can't have them running loose on the beach. Um, so the plover stays protected, we maintain most of our beach hours. Hopefully, the little buggers will stay in their little green area and we won't have to do anything with the rest of the beach. Um, but, but certainly, like I said, do I love it? No, can I live with it? Yes, so, um, so that's it for me.
I would echo what Jessica's saying, um, it's not a hundred percent of what I would want either, but again, you know, that is the nature of compromise. Um, my, from day one, what I've, I've wanted to do is balance protecting the town against any lit- possibilities of litigation or whatever, spending money on fines with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, uh, and they are the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room. I mean, who knows what will happen? At least we're making an effort, uh, a bona fide effort to both protect the birds and then allow dog owners the use of the beach, uh, as well as people who don't really care to have dogs around it. There's some of that element in here also, which I think is good. Uh, I agree with Ed, it's gonna take some time for people to get used to it. Um, and we are, will be following it, um, and seeing how it works. Can always be tweaked if need be. Um, but I, I, I'm in favor of, uh, this and I appreciate all the hard work by, uh, both Richard and Bill and, and, uh, hammering this out, it's a lot of work.
Well, um, the, you know, looking, looking back and looking at emails that were sent, concerns of people suggesting. concerns of people, suggestions from dog owners, and public comment session, notes that I have taken, I see a lot of things, we've progressed greatly. And when it got right down to the ad hoc committee suggestions, it wasn't quite there yet as far as the compromise. Going back and forth, you try to get the best compromise you can for everybody, like, you know, dogs having time on the beaches year-round to run off-leash. Then you have people that want to use the beach and not be harassed by dogs. We covered that. We went from an eight-foot leash to a 12-foot leash. There's many, many other things that this proposal is significantly different from last year and from what the ad hoc committee presented. So, if, you know, people don't see this as a compromise, I don't know how else it can be done. And I'll end my comments there. Bill?
You know, the goal all along, since, and I've been working on the, this divide-the-beach, a protected area for months, been thinking about it and noodling it and talking with people, and the thing I like about it is, it provides some real space to protect plovers during the nesting season, that April-May period, when they're either going to do nests and have chicks or not. And I think that's great. And I think what we did was, we used the science, as we all learned it in the ad hoc committee, to be able to develop something that extended ourselves beyond where we were several months ago, because I wasn't here several months ago. And it was only as I learned and talked with the other committee members that we worked forward, and even just in recent weeks, to find ways to be able to do it. And I've met with the Maine Audubon people recently to see, you know, is this crazy? And I didn't get a crazy response. There's a lot of science involved in being able to have dogs off-leash on the beach for the greatest amount of time possible. Yes, you can't make it simple. Simple is, no dogs off-leash, April 1 to August 31. But that wasn't going to work. I think our community asked more of us. And I think we can present a very good argument to US Fish and Wildlife and Inland Fisheries for why this should be given a chance. And let's see how we do. So, I'm looking forward to those discussions.
Right. That's one thing that I thought to mention, is plover protection. Everyone who wants, you know, plover protection is considered in this too. So, with that, looks like this proposal will move forward. And right now, we'll have to discuss if it needs to go to ordinance. I'm thinking that, since we all sat down and there's no big hang-ups on this, it probably doesn't need to go to ordinance. But if any of you think that it should go through ordinance, Tom or Bill or anyone here, then it can be, that can be accomplished. At this point, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of points that are not untasteful for...
We are a committee of the whole at this point.
Right, yes, yeah. That's a good point, Bill.
Yes, I, I'm just trying to keep track here. I see, I believe, four different, excuse me, three different ordinances being amended. Certainly, the majority of the amendments will be in the animal control ordinance, and that will take some time to draft. What Bill described will be quite challenging, I think, to put in understandable wording.
Right.
Beyond that, there, what's contemplated is, I guess, an order the council would consider to create this ongoing committee. That's a further, kind of a fourth action, I consider.
Correct.
And so, with the direction I've received tonight, I can begin the process of drafting, and I can work further with you as to the next steps and when to have this ready for the council.
Right. I don't think, I don't think there's no big rush on, do you think, Bill?
As soon as we can put it in place, I think would be very, very helpful to the fact that April's plover season, we're now early March. I think if we keep plugging, it's been a lot of work, but I think we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, so now's the time to push. I don't mind working hard on this further. The drafting is something I'd be happy to participate in, because I've done a lot of ordinance drafting, so. And it is tricky, and you have to think and rethink and turn it over and look at the other side, because it, there's always something, so.
We did some of that earlier, so, I can see how that, that's still going to take some time, that's what I was thinking.
So, I think it's probably going to be based on how fast does it go, and then, a recommendation can be made by the town manager to the chairman if we're ready.
It may well not be done through your next meeting, it may be the first meeting in April.
Right, that's what I was, yeah, figuring it's probably April.
And then, there's an adoption process, the first, second reading, public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I don't think it's, it's not going to be ready for April, for us.
Right, it would probably be, hopefully, if we could make it an April event to get it done, that would be, that would be a very successful undertaking by all of us.
Yeah, no one could accuse this town of wasting its time. We've moved as quickly as possible, as possible, it seems to me.
Right. Yeah, I'd like to, you know, and hear input. So, I guess that will conclude the workshop. We're going to take a 10-minute break, well, maybe nine minutes, let's start at 7:30.
Good, thank you.